Madam alungil itasils, elmer gumi roguil. Alungil itasils, le gorgae Vice President Senator Mariur, ma Flor Lider, Senator Aldabel. Bugun tiare la al senetors, pokua asmirel tiang ngiamom ongeval sils, rela longelol, mltogu vetsel sesion ergid, el mora order. Klerg, amuar ol god.
Senator Retsis, agitaya. Senator Rukwai Gikwa, inabo.
Oi.
Senator Chonatan Shoy, saal.
Oi.
Senator Stevenson Chee Kwarte.
Oi.
Senator Tichay Imru Ramangsau.
Oi.
Senator Mark Blaurudim. Senator Wumi Sangabau.
Oi.
Senator Kasugi El Taps Suninoh. Senator Andrew Tabalwal.
Oi.
Senator Mei Sonyiri Abangan Whip. Flor Lider, Cecilil Aldabel.
Oi.
Vice President Karai Mariur.
Oi.
President Hokons Paulas.
Oi.
Mister President, ngarekwarum.
Ngarekwarum, tirgelt teval senetorsel dibusa excusest. Senator Ludim, Senator Suninoh, Senator Ngiriyabangan, ma Senator Agitaya. Bugun tirah Flor Lider gidel, Senator Aldabel, mbolong tiagir gidela urelit. Senator Aldabel.
President, mutlemal alungil itasils mergaoma Vice President, marbecel senetorsel presentel sesion. Ebu domesatyal atsendar gidel, mbotor sil iron four. Muwumada adaptra second day journal, ra six special sesion.
Si la motion namdu esegn, mtrigel roguil gongel du oi. Omtok namai Flor Lider.
Madam almol, Mister President, marcel iron five, ma the Hoktomas ayel communication, mna ra obisra daiktor el meli. Ngani sel Prescom 11-178, tianga nomination for appointment tra Mister Jackson Doktoch, elmo adala board of directors, rapala visitors authority. Direkal nganiya misselena presidencia communication 11-179, nganiya Hok nomination for appointment tra Mister David Orugum, elmo ambassador, ablurbelau, elmo Republic of China Taiwan. Direkal nganiya Prescom 11-180, nganiya referar senate bill 11-59, ST1, HD2, CD1. Tiha sel elmo mreya judicial qualifications, masalari sre charges, albelel pasra igal boat house, elmo president emna differing in mem, ida noutrin, sel debo appropriate parta kalene. Direkal nganiya Prescom 11-181, etianga transmitar executive order number 471. Direkal di bo information epicla, msel debo appropriate parta kalene. Eda kanti nul, taltatendang, diha ngana six, ma seven, ma eight, ma nine. Ado hukmo imul marcel order of the day, diha ngana unfinished business, mbotor a bill calendar. Adabo first reading, buwum, mbotopasa first reading, senate bill 11-68.
Si la motion namdu esegn, bugun tirah klerg male iwe taiton. Klerg.
Senate Bill number 11-68. A bill for not to create a legislative framework for importation, exportation, manufacture, sale, distribution and safe use of prescription and non-prescription drugs. To establish a national pharmaceutical committee to administer this act in collaboration with the Ministry of Health and Human Services and the Ministry of Justice. Tiha llas mulla amo matmokla ula osisbalil, otobdelil, omotmaklil, ma oturulil, ma omrusel a yel karl baskida tokta, ma yel kukkarl diha omsodel ratokta. Direkal mo matmokra National Pharmaceutical Committee, nganiya monaral ilaltauta tey gidela, lobengela Ministry of Health and Human Services, ma Ministry of Justice. Tiha llas mulla, lutro dea Senator Stevenson Chee Kwarte, Senator Rukwai Gikwa inabo, ma Senator Tichay Imru Ramangsau.
Si eda shelul dasul molla, alma bugun ngitret tirgelt introducer, sembol baskid omsodel, ma kuntira Senator Kwarte, mbolul, luoli omsodel tiang Senator Kwarte.
Sule, Mister President, alungil itasils le gorgao, ma roguil senetorsang tiang. Di bo lataklwa se senator Whip sa mnegril mosan, mna communicate termel wa se sellemen mosan sel original kapit. Tiha, tiha proposal la alngar madad, senate bill 11-68. Amo matmokra teletelela a gar ablurbelau, a yel ngara ekre ablurbelal mey, ma sumo mori yel doruradi ilsel belau. Tiha gidel proposal bi la ngaria for section ergi, otel seccion a yel findingsera olbira ulaw, yel blol betiga olbira ulaw, ongerul seccion a amou ripil era sel partra 34 PNC. Section three amou amenderangi, esel section four a ngari sey gidel effective date, mle wasel date bo lordi tiha, tiha gidel proposal la. Sel section one, Mister President, a olbira ulaw, no tigil wa se yel maklo lalat, ra elmulakar alsel ablurla, the International Pharmaceutical Federation, ma World Health Organization, msel National Institute of Health, ramrigel, a predict malang alwa se alngar madad ltaen, mboni ya mo telgibel gosodela teletelela a gar, ellorusel mora ablurla. Ongerun, kadamdeel wa se yel til orusel a meh del darteragar seralgotel invent, ablabodbetigil wa se betora ba yingam lamom sisirangi, ma dor almore madad, engari attelela yegayidel gar amodi alorol, alsumo kadametragkul ospe. Direkal olbira ulam lamotigil wa se tiha gidel lomrael metmuwe, motodra board dergid, mna mo klo a teal, nganiya yel unregulated, ma lubeng ora di iradrola ba garan me ol sis, e orutra alsel ablurbelau, diha lltirakla la, ma lubeng yel blantigil wa se yegayidattele taen. Direkal, l'adobe lao yel ngaria lemeltir, ma lubeta disur, mdeel wa se galgarololai, rapetel sils yegayidatratir, a yel gar safe, unila quality, ngil morakla ratir. Malwa se albinaklola, omdasu se almentra ablurbelau yel promote, ma lubem oldub, a ma sel korrekt, ma lubeng ngungil teletain, ra omrusel, ma lubeng uspalel a gar alsel ablurbelau. Madospe ra mar clear, ma lubeng ilkaedline, ma lubeng berbilau ror, elmo protect, enshuril wa se aradobe lau, a ngaria gar el diblo el mortir available, el unila akuali trangi, edirekal ngaria control, mndiaha aden mo ora malara uspalel. Malwa se yegayidat olbira ulaw wa se klo ablulabodomesetey gidel proposal la, pharmacy act, elmo amende, emergone improba yel luudel ngariyel altaen. Sel section two, Mister President, amou ripil ra division four, ra title 34, rapala national gold, e amou amenderangi, ripil sey gidel chapter 32. Sel section three, tiha proposal la amou amend ra chapter 34, e mo loliya division 12, ma chapter 87. Tiha gidel chapter 87, abot title ergi wa se rapala pharmacy act. Tiha rapala pharmacy act, ablo adonil, osese sera oturul olbira ulaw, demne introduceri, emilinga la senate, emlora house of delegate, emnina yegayidel technical errors, el related, marcel yel section two, ma section three, sel ripil, ma amendment, mmlodea als el ngara house, emlodea taen, mmlodea aloray. Tiha rapala pharmacy act, ma lubeng lal yel la gar alsel ablurbelau, a ngaria dorri three subsectionsere. E malungil belduk, sel gotel subsectiona di proposal wa se mo mamru systemicari, ma lubeng blatakl, eteletelela oratel, ma enforcement, ra intended, yel roguil lulasu, yel la wa se magranga abodo dospe a gar, yel dolara, ogodblum metmur alsel ablurbelau, ma lubel ngaria gar el dorur alsel ablurbelau, mangeranga abodo demexure, ngaria unila quality trangi, e safe, e unila lordel, mgaray yel rat, ma lubentret, el gidel omdasu. Sel ongerun, adi definisyon, sel ongerde, Mister President, etiha proposal la wa se mbotpiya, a National Pharmaceutical Company, elmo alsel Ministry of Health and Human Services. Tirgelt mo adal tey gidel gamitiya six members, a five are voting members, appoint tra tira president, ememla kancentro olbi, imongadia. Yel nan voting member, alappointing a minister of justice, ngaria ulerer alsel tey gidel mo proposal gamiti. Tirgelt teyim, el voting members, a health professionals, ma liutaden license, ersel board of Palau Health professions. Awan a, a ngara private pharmacy, imong a ngara sel Ministry of Health and Human Services pharmacy, imong a ngara Ministry of Health and Human Services, imong a tokta al ngara sel belau medical society, imong a nurse, al ngara Palau Nurses Association. Tey mira mo six years, el stagger. Yel restra subsectiona, Mister President, a di olol tewa se magranga bol omo ra uleril, ma bailos, a yel moa bol compensation ratir. Teletelela alsumo ngtoorol, tey miun, tey miun, ra yel togora ortel mortil, alsumo tumulay yel uror, elltirakla tiha gidel, tiha gidel proposal la. Yel restamo, waya di bo lgarbila wa se importa, importa garan merbelau, ngariyel blue, belau a orading la setifai, wa se indigayidel blue abodola a gar. Alsumo ngaria gar, oktodra yel nan approved countries, etiha gidel gamiti modongokle, mo deal with them case by case. Direkal ngaria yel gar el modigal sederlotu, gamiti mo decide through regulation, el wa se yel gar, diha safe, sebedel, l'tura alsel ablurbelau. Direkal modibaidai galgar, momori yel psychotropic, ma lubeng yel kuklospe aradra behavior health, el omgarra, tiha yel kuklaintra behavior health. Direkal ngaria yel narcotics, yel narcotics yel wa itamidomi, yel gar el grularing, ma wa morphine, ma wa demrol, ma wa tramadol, yegayidatara classification yedemo classify. Direkal mo, masadai yel prescription drugs, yel gar el gilir ratokta, ma veterinarians, ma ubete dentist, elsebeel prescribing. Ngaria yel nan prescription drugs, yel gar el digaratana, restor a yedemo blind, tiha gamiti direkal mo mes, demexure akuali trangi unu. Direkal tiha acta mo describe, ra license etirgelt roguil a, elmo involve ra importation, ma oturulil, ma dispense selway alo ablurbelau, igalgar alsel ablurbelau. Direkal tiha la, proposal la amou se, omolu se yel prescription a ngara teletelela, alsumo ada ospe yegayidel itamidomi yel ora waya abodo saorangi, enwa a ngara teletelela, alsumo ospe, mutel additional, a gamiti magranga abo la approve. Se yagora, yeg deblo omsodel tiha proposal la, Mister President, omdasetya klo ablulabodomesingil senetors, edotpi ma bospel mo blal insel, lataklat teletelela dospe a gar, ma lubedol utakar, ma lubedol trakar, ra alsel ablurbelau. Omsole, President.
Diskasyon, Senator Inabo.
Monsulangi, President, mrengasulela chairman ra health gamiti tiha allungil lae, tiha kuramna talbel dum madad. Akorati, concern girela labeling. Sel korap toka bebirataming mea, karangkatikal, albebir ngaria labelarangi, ndidi kasi edel, al amui mamang akulitla, osese sumo ngungil etal yanga labeling requirement ra alsel alam, yeg roguil karl metmur, ngaria accurate labelarangi, osese tihang morangklil, karaman, tokora preventa mis tekara, malaya, tegal gidel malayalgar. Suleangi, Mister President.
Senator Kwarte.
Suleangi, Mister President, malsola Senator Inabo, a ngara alsel tey gidela la, enma lblatakl, ngara ta yel, yel migarrel basel wa se labeling, ma di mo lblatakl, togora mregel, ma lubentorora belau, yel nasel, ma luben ofisela, mwe sere ablurbelau. Sula.
Senator Isal.
Monsula tiala, Mister President, alungil afternoon mergaoma, Vice President, Flor Lider, marbecel senetorsel present. Akmo otia, Senator Kwarte, etiha, bebirasenetorsel bongelmo, go introduce tiha bil, tiha ma long time coming. Ma since nineteen ninety four, me lanamotela la independent, away from trust territory, egol, agansidera, malklabulut goi, considering health issues ablurbelau, enmal plow avtutelil mergidela ablurbelau, buwodla, middle age, marangalka. Ndii, akma di moqmi ngang, ma lo giwa omul, wa se sel domesla, mregel. Etarakotel, tool, mondaira, buwodla, abluram regel, tiha na retire prescription drugs, aarala, agar. Mang akulitla wa se ukmong mospel a gamitil, mo omeset tiang, el bo ngittiangidel aden, mo omesa osisibel, moturulil, makasikalala agar. Edirekal, lbotogarigik, l'masal sebedel, esmeika, ngungil gombali, na necesering yasui. Let's find ways to get some medicine here. El dehalsal kukmalta kay. I know, ndiwa ralalu, ika dekadorut lalo. Ndii, there's gotta be ways, edirekal do maal bol, may otrora private sector, ma lube private sectora maal bol, yeg otrora merah, kaviment, to the hospital. Ndii, maltara costly, maltara living, cost of living expense, alabulad, especially available, included aarala medicine. Ra yel, yel kitrak, ma wai gemamalgub, ora omsil, ma landromat, ma. So, akumdasu, entarama klabulut goi, podo omeserangi a droolbi, ma President, asikademgale, auklakasibedemwa alalalu, merio. Edibagakasibedemwa alalagar. For the sake of our people's life, it'll give them affordable. Sula.
Senator Songvao.
Sule, President, tiala, otaktiral mrengasulela, menintroducer, ma senetorsenepaset tiang, akumra kasing mal important, tiha legislation ensure safety, ma health ra aderbelau, adi yuga, ogel kuaseng, yel kuk traditional medicine, ennan prescription. Yel altaen, mo giredal mo classify, under tiha gidel legislation, ogel a menintroducer, mlerengi olmol, President.
Senator Kwarte.
Sule, Mister President, agote, sel nekotel galila, Senator Inabo, a page eight, line twenty. El wa se, in any case of non-prescription drugs or drugs packages include clearly identifiable and recognizable labeling in Palawan and English. Identifying drugs as legal non-prescription drug. Mesegida mosedel ospe ngi, expanding yel morangi dil, partet tiang. Ongerusel tiangela, Senator, takan Senator Isal, akumdasu, partet tiy gidela la, ndisel waya boligan, sebel mother, wa se kalesebel a ministry a helden, sigya source, emergone mygalgaran mey, emergone distribute el moray yel outlet, inabor cheaper way, so, ndasisi understandable. As far as a gal traditional medicine, edemdeel wa se sel, sel la, health professional licensure board, ade al license are traditional healers. Unless a qadrasinalmen me practice a traditional healing ablurbelau, then you have to be licensed. The reason for that, nemringa sel tamra, creating a bol regulator, el define, wa se ra amalgar. So in this format, emergone isel wa se alsumo manufacture, emaltra tiha gar, in a way that understand the pharmacy, then it may be required that you license them.
Olmol.
Sule, President. Gariga goramusoi, sebra kuk, el altami yel el dokkuaseng controlled substance. Man, with this given ability ra, alsumo ngaria aden sebelo otik, kuaset tiha gidel dalomela, atelgibel gorase elmusugara kukrektem. Emuse edel ospe, tiha gidel process, emergone register ngi, ta approve ngi, kuaset tiata ra gar elmusedel ospe ngi. Emodiakal mugul, ndira yel kuk tokmaseng controlled substance, el altami mugul. In other words, ito kuaseng illegal drugs. Hope, President, dalomel, bebir ablua, ma l'gora fe musi ngi, ogel, sey gidakora, amokte garakrigam, tiha gidel gamiting sebedel ospe ngi, alsumo tomusabi ilpro ngi, kuaset ngulmestri, kuaset ngaria kuk toku vetsel patientsel gamam, l'gora mlamesa beneficia tiang, tiha galelsa beel, tiha gamitil, mo omesenya sen sebedel, mo otungi, egadam a ospe ngi, l'gar alsel ablurbelau. Sula, Mister President, ulitlal sebedla, menintroduceri, direkal goramo we ini tiha, omdasu ngaria ngara lalit tiha l'gwa direkal mo masa de sheymal sele, lalitl goro odakya ngi. Sula.
Senator Kwarte.
Sule, President, tiala, malsola Senator Songvao, bring over say. Uspera cannabis, example, adi alsey gidel lulamdasu, nding umak, soko lospe yel example. At ora cannabis angala gamitinablem asan ngi, Mister President. Yulmak korawa, ulerikadaniye, mo introduce tiang, at tiha gid. Tirgelt aden, mo member tiha board, a mo appointed tira president, ememla kancentro olbi, ralulaw, eh, their medical professionals, the five and a, license to practice ablurbelau. Tirgeldamusabi iril, mdo ngokli, alsumo cannabis, eto may yel scientific research eme, emergone ma omesel wa se tiang ngaria value, blavose edel, except trangi, l'gar ablurbelau. Ndadi l'canabis. El tobat bebiray yel garl manufacturer amregel, etiha mdo ngokli wa se, tiha besel garl dirablel manufacturingi, yegayidat study, grulakowid, for example. Vaxlovid, adi meral metmur belau, dimlaka gamitil, mo omesenya wa se tiang, a belau approve ngi, ma lubendek. Edi ni tokto war for it, otungi ablurbelau. Se unila example. Mati gidel gamiti, se yamitil, oria yegayidel emergency, wa se oke, amregel amla approve ngi, sila amla approve ngi, yegel bulam la approve ngi, a belau, as fast, as far as they can tell, etihang safer merar aarabe lau, se amola imala ablurbelau. Akmo l'gora wa se, Mister President, tele bil, ngarama gamitir gar ela, l'girela la cannabis, adi alsal medical bill, actually it's a business bill. Mang ulmengora tactically, wa se meh da, da relit tiy gid, emergone gidabodde discuss, wa se malsumo teletelela commerce, el todrakamitir gar a helden mora gamitira commerce, madosode ilmoresel ulabat telela wa se, alsumo kadamorut trangi, business, mgararut el business. Len, diha kapasitira, tiha gidel aladel mdo ngokle, orutra business ra cannabis, mesel kukto mesel wa se, a scientific studies mgora. But tiha di toe, se, trasenetorsal mora, atorada dalomen, direkal mora tora yeg besel garl, for example, igal grulakowid, ma vaccinesa kowid, el dimle, egadgora di, di lwa, egonge, mesoiisbi, outta gamitil mdo ngokla wa se, esakamiti, el responsible, el moray ga gidel gar, egigonge wa se, aigasafe l'gora aarabe lau. I hope that's my answer.
Suleangi, Senator Kwarte, Senator Mariur.
Monsula, President, akmal mrengasulela, Doctor Kwarte, mtrigel menintrodusetiha bil, alungil bil. Kwarte akwadi, ogel ngaringa. Mrengasulela, ada gastom, sedirekal malungil aurol, le butoka yel garl, ludema airport, msel debora gastom, salubiratay, medbonwa dibulakar. Etu aseng yel ludema airport, emalme, mtlau aurol, lomtrinado hospital, kanfiskate, yegidel garl, la diha gal giril, orade, metmuwe metmuwe. Ndii, goker se, senetor ngaringa, a direkal yegel moy. Yegel moy, emora yel stoal, l'adobe lau, lorutada ngode abluk. Yada adi mral, mora konterasi, meh tara yel til orus. Engu, egida mnelwa se yeg prescription, yel ratokta prescription, egamalani. Bela yegidengara, korase bedel, wekadmo kontrol, yegidel moy. Engaka, omdasu wa se, alsumo ngora, na yegedel rulit, tiha mori yel penalti, malmo mringela penalti, ra aden mo tomelit tiang. Leti yegamora, a, mafektaklengar, ra aden, yel mo mringela penalti, mnsel aadetomelik, edobibokora license a gombali ngi, stop, madialo gombalia. Omdasu yegidela, la yegedel molam, ma mrengasulela, tiha allungil bil, ebol sebedel muturulil, ma ngitay yegidel, gorawal, gorad, mrsel dihul, mndirgal metmuwe yegidel garl, ngia la diha gal giril metmuwe metmuwe. Sule, President.
Senator Kwarte.
Sule, President, mmsula Vice President, Senator Mariur. Sel overa page thirteen or fourteen, etiha gidel proposal la, sel subsection eighty seven thirty two. Ngari sel authorization for inspection, confiscation and destruction. Yegidel membera gamiti, el non-voting member, el nominateriya Ministry of Justice. Yegidamouimala Ministry of Justice, el molongsero, tiha gidel gamiti, ma Ministry a helden. El inspecta yel, yegidel wa se hereby authorized to conduct routine inspection of all drugs associated with record keeping, licensed suppliers and dispenser, may yel roguil entity. Etalsumo ngaria albatigil, kuk, dehagi rel ngaryay, eng balduk, wa se, mageranga bol confiscate, mageranga bol destroy, including storage within pharmacy department, ra hospital, wa se mageral, alsaifli, ngay yel loang, msumtumara airport, mageranga bol. Ma gamitil, ma omeset tiang, alsel ma omesayil detail, eh, align the marcel oria, Vice President.
Sula. Senator Songvao.
President, sawrata tiala, mltulawlale. Akkoramla, tobodobigaya imongi, aukmeset tiang, Mister President, emral goran, meh delosisha uroler ngi, etiha gidel food and drug administrator ablura amregel, ngaria bebir a role chingil goramo osisiu. Eh, direkal alsel sey gidel kuk administration, ngara ablura amregel, etiha direkal mo regulate a garl mora arm. Eh, Mister President, manda wune, kmaseng appropriate, sebedel tiha la, el mo goran include yegayid, alubeng bebing guktara, rorol, yegedel omeserangi, ma kora di ogel, menintroduceri, mlsabel el gaver, le direkal manamor, ngaria yegayidel goraklini, ngaria ngi belau. Mlungil, mmlamo goran, health egal, ma mutregal, kuk, lifestyle ngaringi. Eh, goramore yegidel aktel, tiha gidel wishet tim. Eh, gora amorri, ya gidil rakte la, ya gidil mission, timla yegidil rakte la, arm, that could potentially impact ra heldi gidil, sevodo. Ongak, ak ti ogel waset tiya, a dirigal mo angesther selling, ayel garra, administer, especially morayel, la armel nya, adal mo konsum. Ah, important, Mr. President, ma cora di, so al bring up, se gidil pointe, al sebe le, se gamitie, mal, sebe la chairman, longyaringi, la longyaringi, alagibul, gora mo parta se gidil, related al duasen molam, sugumeng gurker de separate ringi, de separate ringi. Sula, te al, Mr. President.
Senator Quarte.
Sula, Mr. President, akumdasen la gara, sel definition, malu betrigel, gariyaa license till prescribe a garra blue belau. Ya ulmac no mention, a veterinarians, tiya dokta ra arma, included, ya gidil ro here. So, sluester included, eh, eh, tal pharmaceutical company, I mean, a gamitii, a dirigal mo omesayey gidil wasin. The only thing, el al gundas, wasa maybe, alsum sege da agi, se sel tar, se gamitil mo mesen yin, maybe a one, the tiya member, la gamitibol license, el veterinarian, practice, ra blue belau. Ndigi, es, es right now, a dirigal, call tal, gariyaa, a mal permanent, el veterinarian, eh, ligama unmem ringla, do turni, la, la, but maybe a regulation, sebe el mo address, at some point. Sula.
Senator Inavo.
Eh, President, so al mutal bring up, sel point, al blay bring up, prenyas, senatoris, al girela, regulate, aarala, aar. Um, na nyaa, taratamek na ra taiwangi, na nyaa, mal, ma clo, al regals, ema newspaper, al girela, governmental investigator, excessive profits from the pharmacies, le, because governmental provide the insurance, medical insurance, emora rohulat. Eng, eng interest, governmental make sure, eng excessive profits, eti al, lord trawa, gara, a guk limited, el morayel, el, el diya gal bankrupt, eti al, medical insurance, governmental. Ma, guli trakamitie, President, al mongura, at tiya, al wasel. La, sa nga, krisi elabor, le dirigal, sebe el regulate, excessive profit, and the one, as a mara, at a define excessive profit, and ding, akumdas, sing, um, interest, ra blue belau, alsuman musa edel regulate, excessive profits, le medical insurance, al gidha, apia, aral aar, mang, um, gire dal, alol yang, al wasen, sebe el tal gamitil, cheka, aral aar, al wasen, mal excessive, mal uvin diak. Ma guli trase gid, President, sula.
Senator Quarte.
Sula, Senator Inavo, it's a very interesting, eh, perspective, ya let victory waset ya gid. Um, gariyaa garan, se de mla, developing countries, rela, let's say, grula high blood. El malimisen, se me importa, me belan, malbe taral, ome moturra, ra, at some level, and the gariyura, aral, and the profit margin a clo. Ya gidil make sure quality ringi, le, a ulmeti alla, motmu. Se me importa, garan, garam, regelme, emering la aral, and the profit margin a giri, and the quality is assured. Um, difficult, eh, discussion, le, se la profit margin, ya gidil order, eh, cheaper countries. Ding, at some point, and gire dal make sure quality ringi, a meter cell standard. Or, egadu, aguril wasi, que the, malagara, let's say, Australia, or, rum regel, or Canada, le give a sure the quality ringi, ya le men cheaper, le give emering la aral, and the profit margin a giri. Ma umdas se se gidil, gara gire dal omesel wasi, how do we assure quality, eh, a cost effective, le, alorgu yas, senatorisal. Eh, umdas, akadi motungitiam, se gidil, gamitibol omesena model, by which a quality gar, as el, yel essential drugs. Land ra blue belau, eh, ah, water material vulnerable, was in an access a yel gar, in a more affordable way. Sula.
Senator Isal.
Gora di ogel, tiya gora, but at tal, gariyaa service of hospital, eh, amor, amor chwery, amor, elam namora private. Ayegidil medicine, il below spe, se uklabul se arat, namat. Ayeng direct, mo andere tiya gidil, gamitii, mo make sure, gada, mal, la, quality, high value, medicine, take care, that guk namusme.
Senator Quarte.
Sula, President, umdasan la, diya, diya, diya define ra garra el mora, arm. Ma mora, dirigal, adal, ma mal madal, ndi wasa gamitie, yero guk, garra, metmore, ra blue belau. Et tomo reg, tomo, tomo message, regulation wasi, auspalela tiya gid, meters a gid, standard, so diya gal prejudice, girela, a situation, prejudice, girela, importation, ma auspalela, ra blue belau.
Dirige, Senator Quarte, dirigal, mo mesengi, le, la, I gal, malgarak, light malgar, a dirigal, gariyaa garra, import, el mogurur. Eh, kar dirigal, mo mesengi, tal bol, mo lo uspe arara ade. Dirige, Senator Inavo, malungil tiya la, ma gada, mo, support ringi, guli trak chairman, ngel mongura, ringi, malora di. Andi, um, komde ngel, wasa ygal gar, le men, se, esel taxel, gumiya, gila ngaringi, el, gariyaa ten percent, se bolobal moraygan. Le, dimla, gada, mal last, mal wasela, the taxa, aar, andi gumiya guk, noso mil tax. Se dirigal, mo mesengi, ma uera, about the tax medicine. Eh, the mesengi, la uera, bon effective. Senator Quarte.
Mr. President, mmsula, akman, lo mesel, sel tax, se la urut ya. Le, imorayel, ne, wayal, al negotiation, lo ngayala, chairman Inavo, di wasi, prescription drugs. La gavol, the, the la, sel ten percent ringi, ndi yel over the counter, ya gidil, malwendan prescription drugs, ya gidam orin sel ten percent. Sula.
Wayse, Senator Inavo, eh, diya gom gora, al mutal spodil, mo klir, el mora, al adal, mom aragri.
Mr. President, ah, ah, ngariyael, example, provisional PTSD, yeah, prescription drugs, sa taray, gidil, example, items, la yin. Mang, diya gal tax, whether it's going to private sector, or more hospital, diha tax.
Ogel, madang manungit. Al sugumendigang, etirger ogu il, el gonger, tal uldas, emola, rakut longi weld, do oy. Om tok. Namay, eh, ak asain ringi, mora chairman, a held, Senator Quarte, o ngit, mapol sebe el, el mere edel, motmu. Flolider.
Uh, Mr. President, sege da dimle, imol, na first reading, eh, diya gana, second reading. Um, or adabo, adut reading, eh, Mr. President, di, don't tiya short wishes.
Short wishes. Ak clout, el, gada, ngasession, el mora order. Flolider.
President, ak gada, na adut reading, eh, isel, na adut reading, PD one, President. Ma, kla, mo son, el pass, ra adut, and final reading, Senate Bill eleven thousand fifty nine, ST one, HD two, CD one, PD one.
Si la motion, nam dunga, second, cleragam, iwa ta itol.
Senate Bill number eleven thousand fifty nine, ST one, HD two, CD one, PD one. Bill for act to amend section two of four, A of title four of the Palau National Code, relating to the qualifications of the senior judge and associate judges of the Court of Common Pleas, to amend section seven of two C, one C, concerning the base salary of associate judge. To repeal four P and C subsection three oh nine, in its entirety, and to appropriate funds for marine transport expenses previously authorized by RPL eleven thousand twelve. Tla, das, emola, di, mumlo da, section two of four, era, title four of Palau National Code, sel msaad, girela yel qualifications, ra senior judge, ma associate judge, ra Gregory, Ra Common Pleas. Diya, mumlo da, section seven of two, C, one C, girela yel lududir, lududil, ngel mo associate judge. Eh, mo, repealer, sel section four, ra, sel four P and C, la subsection three oh nine, ro here. Eh, motoda, yel lududel, be, the authorize, al se la RPL eleven thousand twelve, girela marine transport. Tla, das, emola, be introduce yaa, Senator Jonathan Cho Isal.
Auera, about sent, ke, me gun tiya Senator Isal, mal, li lut, el smodit, tal uldas, emola, logo, gelsel PD one, President. Senator Isal.
Mmsula, te al, Mr. President, Mr. President, dago, te, docora di, samrai, se tal uldas, emola, Senate Bill eleven thousand fifty nine, ST one, HD two, CD one, PD one. Ya, akman, so al mutal, te al, is one of you senators, e, guli nasuli. Rek, bo guli nasuli, la spirit, Anastasio, ma adra house, el, al adal, tal urior, tiya, amriyagidil, se la march. Logiwa, on tiya, as chief justice, yre galau. El, demokte garan yea, kashe, bodome, sa yel qualification, ra, sos, a senior judge, ma associate judges of the Court of Common Pleas. Ma gadril, yavrele, tal blay, emnor a, a house, house, emdil, yavrele, eh, emergonge, emlola yau, right there. Eh, ngil right there, ninety thousand dollars in total. Logiwa, tal eri yam, mora blue, ngayang. Logiwa, tal eri yam, mora blue, ngayau, logiwa, tal eri yam, mora blue, ra biliyau. Tiya, yegi, annual appropriation, gara budget, and dignity me authorized, and did not appropriate, logiwa FY twenty twenty two budget. Em, se la house, lo yau, eh, me utu, tal, la, la, lu, malimran, mora, bitu, biliyaa, emdei, temra discussion, gariyaa, me uldas, tal blay, wasi, gire lungil, but, tab, sula, omrule, eh, eh, di la supplemental. And ding, at ti end of the day, eh, go me agri, tal blay, wasi, peredengu, close, balel. Ya gidil, al se tiya, mong, umdas, al adal, ngayang, al ma, al adal, ngayau, ma biliyau, ma apisierip. Eh, direct, Vice President, Ra Senate, dada, obeski, la direct, mekata, ten percent, across the board, ra, through ministry, ma baby, ra independent agencies. Ra governmental, um, akumdas, adikania, time between, non September, do gonge, la President, la urior. El, mosovak, sopak, la yegid, budget activity, din, gariyaa, ten percent, cut. Emusse gid, al guli nasuli, ar bekladi, move for vote, thank you.
Sugumendigang, eh, gun tiya clerag, ma, longarol, gol, clerag, warol, gol.
Senator Gubai, ki, ku, Inavo.
Oi.
Senator Jonathan Cho Isal.
Oi.
Senator Stevenson, Chey Quarte.
Oi.
Senator Tite, Imru, Ramasaw.
Oi.
Senator Umi, Sangvao.
Oi.
Senator Andrew, Tabalwal.
Oi.
Flolider, Cecilil, Eldabel. Vice President, Karay Mariur.
Oi.
President, Okontz Paulis.
Oi.
Mr. President, a sekiwa, na inel yes, eh, diya gano.
Ashentyol, girel, tal uldas, emola, ra, o ngedela, ngi weld, na inel yes, eh, diya gano, mong, namay, tal blay, Ra Senate. Flolider.
Ega gid, Mr. President, se mo lastel bill, gara, bill calendar. Recor, actioner gin, me da, guk thiyul, morsel, twelve, resolution calendar. Aba, rifral, eh, eh, ngariyael, ngarifral, Senate Resolution eleven thousand seventy eight, tiya, sel confirming the presidential appointment, Ra Mr. David Orru. Mo ambassador, blue belau, el mora Republic of China, Taiwan. A dirigal, sel Senate Resolution eleven thousand seventy nine, nya, confirm, presidential appointment, Ra, Mr. Jackson Dokto, el mo da la board, Ra Palau Visitors Authority. Ri gid, a yel tablo, ngara, calendar, gid, la, al si, si, they make assignment, eh, di, denaut ringi, gariyaa yel, el baby, ra, communication, el dirigal, girela, tora appointment, el, a dirigal, uh, staff, ma, ma, brula, capir, eh, la, amsel, ball ready. Eh, egadama place, ra appropriate, par tal calendar, em, di, for mentioni. President, madim, asain a yegi, gamitir gara, mo mesay gidil, tablo ra.
Sel appointment, Ra Mr. David Orru, malmo, ambassador, el mora blue, Ra Taiwan, ak asain ringi, mora chairman, uh, Senator, yere bang, Luips. Eh, di busma, di guli trak, vice chairman, ringi, Senator Quarte, mal, techno, tringi, mal, me, eh, chairman, Luips, eh, bolo, omesengi. Sel appointment, Ra Mr. Jackson Dokto, el mora Board of Director, Palau Visitors Authority, ak asain ringi, mora chairman, Sangvao. Dirigal, bo mo mesengi, sebe le, motmu, clauror, girela, gal, amre, the time, eh, gun tiya short wishes. Madaklout, el, um, gada, ngasession, er gidil, el mora order. Flolider.
President, or adabo, a wishes, eh, damla, sel, uh, item twelve, resolution calendar. Sula, eh, Mr. President, kada, mla, kama asain a yegi, tablo, uh, resolution, and, girela, yegi, tablo, appointment. Ndigi, gid, a yel, kalder, communication, na, obisal, presidential mail, diya gal, girela, tora appointment. Ma, kla, la motion, ma was, edel, suspend, arul, se gidil, the place, a yega, appropriate, para tal calendar.
Si la motion, nam dunga, second, um, tirger ogu il, gongel, do oy. Om tok. Namoy she.
Okay, Mr. President, madalo, is, dilbora, information, ar beklada, ya gidil, kaldel, communication, na, obisal, datorion, ngariyael, Prescam eleven thousand eighty two, eti a, na, nomination for appointment, Ra Ms. Romana Wong, el mo da la board, Ra Trustees, Ra Palau Community College. Dirigal, ngariyael, Prescam eleven thousand one forty three, nya, nomination for appointment, Ra Mr. Joseph Anastasio, el mo member, Palau National Scholarship Board. Dirigal, ngariyael, Prescam eleven thousand one eight four, nya, nomination for appointment, Ra Ms. Jennifer S. Olgrill, el mo member, board, Ra, Palau Visitors Authority. Ya gid, a yel, kaldel, communication, malut, kertir, gal, te der, mo da la, board, the, did lut, el mora. Uh, resolution, uh, calendar, eh, eh, the place, a yegidil, mora rifral, eh, ngariyael, resolution, uh, eleven thousand one eighty, tiya, sel, mo, uh, point, Ra, reappoint, Ra Ms. Romana Wong, el mora PCC. Mesel, Senate Resolution eleven thousand eighty one, nya, momil, Ra Mr. Joseph Anastasio, el mora, Nas, Palau National Scholarship Board. Mesel, Senate Resolution eleven thousand eighty two, guk malut, kara, at, Ms. Jennifer Olgrill, mora Palau Visitors Board of Directors. Ya gid, a yel, kaldel, uh, resolution, President, mla place, Ra referral calendar, madim, make a assignment, eh, the almon.
Mesel, reappointment, Ra Ms. Romana Wong, ma, el mora Community College Board. Ma, Mr. Joseph Anastasio, el mora Palau National Scholarship Board, ayeg, asain, el mora Chairman Education, Senator Tabalwal. Esel appointment, Ra, Ms. Jennifer Olgrill, el mo da la board, Ra Visitors Authority, ak asain ringi, mora Senator Sangvao. Ma, guli trak, embol, sebe el, mere, da, motmu, claurer, le, la, Iga. Flolider.
Alwayse, kada, mal, me, diya gana, adoption, me, number thirteen, diya gana, yea, fourteen, the, bor sel fifteen, petition, memorial communications. Did not, a yel, miscellaneous, miscellaneous communication, eleven thousand four, four, five, six, eti amna, Bureau of Domestic Affairs. El girel, MPII notice of proposal, rules of regulation. Dirigal, gariyaa, miscellaneous communication, eleven thousand four, five, seven, tiya, ukna, Ms. France, emera, Paul, Senate President, Paulis. El invitation to participate, eh, national consultation on climate mobility in Palau, on June fifteen, twenty twenty two. Dirigal, gariyaa, miscellaneous communication, eleven thousand four, five, eight, tiya, ukna, Mlara FIB. El apologies, apologies for inadvertently, uh, circulating for comment, application for, for investment, approval certificate. Uh, fun, you, DBA, da, dae investment. Se di information, ma, bekl, senators. Dirigal, gariyaa, miscellaneous communication, eleven thousand four, five, nine, eti amna, obisal, rubugul belau. El mergol, Senate President, Paulis, el, msaad, girela, Palau National Marine Sanctuary. Gariyaa, miscellaneous communication, eleven thousand four, six, zero, six, zero, Mlara, Mr. Yrengas, el mora, ROP President, Luips. Ma Minister Udui Junior, el girela, important matters, requiring their attention. Gariyaa, miscellaneous communication, eleven thousand four, six, one, eti amna, Ms. Cosino, mergol, Senate President, Paulis, el girela. Merakal senate president paulis eh giril certified capira resolution eh number eleven das eight das two. Ngani direkal miscellaneous communication eleven das four six two tia mna ra FIB solicit argument eh giril FIAC application. Miscellaneous communication four six three certified capira OEN resolution number twenty das twenty. Celulban miscellaneous communication eleven das four six four mna ra mister ngirulbad. Mura senate senator inabo. Eh giril a letter of April twenty nine twenty twenty two regarding the hold. Place by SS eh social security administration on supplemental benefits payment for twenty twenty two. Riida mister president eh miscellaneous communication eh ledre si belal sesion. Eh dalmon mursel sixteen eh bestreterler senators eh ngani miscellaneous business.
Miscellaneous business. Dyagawura senator shol mulwangi din ngrang? Senator inabo?
Eh mister president kamsula, miscellaneous communication eh eleven das four fifty six. Se sel eh rules and regulations eh. Blalotabedia MPII eh giril sel bureau of communications eh sel mo regulatory framework ra. Arogui eh telecom businesses eh alse la blurbelaw. Eh mister president eh ayka mal. Six. Ngariya licensing rules ma fees. Fees regulations. Ma numbering rules interconnection and access rules radio frequency and licensing rules. Ma telecommunications equipment regulations. Ma eh gigi da rules and regulations eh mister president ayka mo regulator eh tial. Eh mla mo. Oh mla mo deregulated telecom industry ra blurbelaw. Melanga bureau of communication amospe ayka gigi da rules eh regulator eh gigi dal. Eh ayka roguil business eh way eh bol eh. Commercial businesses eh orurt ra telecom industry eh. Sera laslol bilagadama nebel oil eh aska harapire ayka gigi dal rules. Mang. Akumdas ayka mal maklotutlel giril olbil eh review eh mo make sureing dyaka akura. Kuramo regulation eh tel industrial eh mo makitra blurbelaw. Mang I'm sure minister has been working on these rules for the last couple of years. Ma. Makpa yongite president losing. Ngabi giridan mo olngitra bureau of communication oh kwama maski da briefing ra ikang makatakura mo. Sebeda aska questions eh make sureing. Hmm kuramo dungilayka rules ah ah bagengei. Let eh latya nga circulation ayka ngoltira pra APA process ma. Ngiril olbi ra kular review ayka rules eh new otia ondaswela mura. Ah MPIIC minister eh basing ngariyasawadal chain saika rules oring dyak. Mang akumdas losi ayka mal maklotutlel rules eh giridan mo review eh. President makti suhalong sehitra mura attention akaw. Eh. Angtirakal suhalong attention ra rokul senators and mursel. Eh pabil ngila ah social security administration sel miskam eleven das four das six four. Eh semley in response sel mura amlay questions sergidil president. Ma. I think we need to look at eh tegi dalit eh agadamla asay gigi da questions eh giril sel no social security amlesto bygela payment tra benefits and more beneficiaries. Mang I hope eh agad. Ngani attachment eh ngili letirka ni request ta capira faya aritad financial report eh SS ma. Akulite bol sebeda ngariya time away senmin sel bol mitel girilayka igi dal response of social security eh da. Eh bol sebeda reviersel ultasel mola eh ngaramta la senate eh al girila chains ala SS. Mang direkal maklotutel sel pabil ngila social security eh. Eh board alme eh tia. Ak milusel mura chairman ngirulbad va malmera sulel el. Mlosabel el eh respondar mayga questioner gigi. Eh di se gigi de mister president eh mister kamarang ya malmasawila.
Solange senator inabo, senator isal.
Mister president ta. Agadu algon dyak usaimis miscellaneous eh agadu ah chair lady inabo eh goramla. Ymantra ngara mallotutel tawoy. Giril gatmok mergit. Madala house ma ma madala senate. Eh leng. Namogora mius ah. At tawoy ra ma kitra bluda amlay gelen di to omiserni ra bekl sesen di. Di chains malvala tal up and down, up and down. Eh sinser bol wa ishe gigi meh da langan dyak atala bel dumtial tialblayla. A pension. Ma SS. Ma compact of association trust board of trustees. Eh lobte triral consultant eh tir eh mail expert eh mergit lasi. Kedigil agel tang ra egal udure dal invested ra blura alabala. Kedkora di ma bamier. Ma gitamlo yo. There are more. Important issues ngaralala sel ayka tawoy. Eh gigi da di omisrebebul. Namogire dal olngit la sing. Tira ngan dyakal guk. Lo mogdor kau ma appropriate chairman ergi. Eh ngiti triritirgal semong ra. Amital consultant eh tir ra. Ayka invested fund SS ma pension. Bel memel no otia. I know we have problem with unfounded liability ma. Agarama agaram. Guktilo otit tialinvestment setiang. Meral budulge. Tira almane jese tir afalungil perform giril kei. Tira mal dyakal perform gukla fireki. Ki ra naqamne member tialboard mne magtektal time. Mnestafra haus mtektal time. Eh every three times ra ir eh gigi ta senator marilmatya. Sel lemate galad tokuni adra compact transfer. Ak yongoitit trir eh mo mitra senators ma appropriate kami ri. Eh oota oh urati. Galakadkora di elwid. Ngani mnamoriya kampirer mtekel mutukala kampira di til moe. Andi denitugam eh assured a leader sih but tialblay. Ma house, ma president eh basi we doing all the best we can. Eh ki lose ayka gigi rudol eh ayka gigi da ul. Andi. Ayka gigi da mo rule guk butil gib improve going forward. Mang. Magtektal kora domdaswerni. Eh dyakon ngel se tikat mal maasangal adra board ra kofa. Adra board ra SS. Adra board ra pension. Dyakatemil guk. Di selbonya mondai kada. Kau godongel meh kau mondai. No, I think they ought to come in. Eh but abangale ngiti tritigal experte ki. Tigal consultant eh tir tigal acturial eh memel refeser gigi. Eh bododungea aykel meral issue within its fund. Eh basing ra na ra aykel malhappening sel every day, every month, every quarter, every year. I hope they're here. I'll appeal to them. Naqam umrangel basi. Ngan dyakal gi ra giro mogdor til me. Selbonya problem ngan paytiro mogdor gigi asegim mekow eh gigi experte bebe ra gal tawoy. Solange mister president.
Solange senator. Isal, senator sangbaw.
Solay, president andi. Mogodeba miscellaneous eh di imo. Akka akulongitra legal counselor gigi de mister president eh. Eh lo gerak questionekwa se egal corporation malubung franchise eh. Operator republicer belaw lo wongela partnership eh require eh FIS foreign investment approval certificate. Akugel eh sera taradamitra FIB akuligerak questionekwa se. A budget car rental. Require malana FIB permit. Eh kuasen di akudengei. Eh dirkakata look into it. Ma kallegal counselor gigi de legalamra lo mesel basing namupto ayka gigi de. Eh kaga rusal konbalin mesoeisbe partner let's say for instance eh tua maktanol. Ngara processing ngi mesoeis. Akka mang no look into this eh mister president eh go mityadriga yunul maskaga. Ah mo askertibet eh shera apile gor gumiak timotral tadiimlegadebel kora samrini. Eh kuasen ah lo meserni ndiaga like wire. Ah as long as eh tirkeel sel franchise agreement. Ala falor ngi ndiaga bol mngel konbalia ndiaga bol involve ba bebe ra showby. For instance, ngel ngel partner gal ngara outside lava kletal franchise. Adi nga segidil agreement eh tuuktimro ngi ndiaga bol involve ba bebe ra showby. Mister president, ak ak understand the shell rational eh alsi tialla. Andi eh FIB alsukum ndiaga bol review ngi marambo ndi kuasen di akal involve ba bebe ra showby. Ma akumdasweng ngiril et listet motmool ngani akuprocessable turni etira issue segidil kuasen diak. Ndia kavalgula bom mospera FIB certificate. Ling dyakora di mayga assumption eh kuasen oi ngariisel agreement eh segidil agreement ta alngeneri. Akumdas sa ulakmamulorteh mister president ta dirgal giridil. Eh protect ayka il showbar ra ader belaw. Ling akumdasweng ngariya unfair advantage ra for instance ah. Alsukum gah gospira franchise let's say ilma okia tokunya matoga ra car rental. Ma guk konbalin maldi konbalir ader belaw. Ling ngariya outside connection eh tir. Masel lemete mdeyang sakmo rentam amlae becauseing tyagidil. Eh ngariya website eh tir ngariya roguim. Akumdasweng important eh. Eh direkal giridil mo gorongil lo meset ayka gigi tle tayle akumdasweng. Sel potentialin guk direkal. Walgora yel guk miganil showby that have existed for a long time ma motlil ngariya goran. Unfair advantage eh tir girilayka gigi. Orior eh mister president eh akura dimle curious eh suhalmesan lo umrak ma se dal doral mo. A development travel belaw eh. Mu giridil osiga partner segidil alsukum sa dal compete in this market. Ma akumdasweng important eh. Eh topic eh giridil direkal gorap pay attention eh closely monitor. Eh sel kapirtial legal eh opinion legal counselor gigi da buksirigil obitir bekladi mister president andi. Akumdasweng dalmon muriel wongela FIB. Akumdasweng giridil uknar mora next step eh make surea kada ngariya esal amendment ta nganaktel mura la. Eh dakatmok el meral mo sobaklaktrir ayka il showbara blurbelaw. Solange mister president.
Solange senator sangbaw, senator mariur.
Solange president eh. Kadi suhalta tsasel tial eh. Eh sel dilia chair woman inabo. Tialigera ta domestic affairs eh sendal tial. Eh proposal regulation ra sel bureau ra domestic eh. Bureau of communication. Eh akumral basi tia ngatil sendre ngi mer forgament. Andi sen nomrel olbi laktrigal mle di mandel basi aykel milsain dal regulations. Aykiril a domestic affairs eh sendel mer olbi ra gulaw. Le gi olbi ra gulaw aykiril muse gigi dal sel signing eh. Olbi ra gulaw ngani hundred twenty days eh lospe lo rebuke gigi dal regulations eh gatmok. But tia ngadil biskidil tia ngablil submitre ngi ra June six. Eh te giril doridei se ngani amre ga gigi dal sel gament period. Ma aykel suman ya gament robi lekodoga sendel meng andi sel lo sainat tialregulation namauror. Se gidil ngiril a domestic affairs eh senda aykel kapil mer olbi ra gulaw. Le se gigi di adoban eh guk komesa sel regulation la hundred twenty days eh dospe ngi aradro olbi. Esabel olbi eh lotubdeh resolutional boy de sel regulational subendyakala ndiakdogni. Eh se gigi da di suhalotil process eh president eh. Eh di tia maldi imorat tawoy. Di suhal ser ngi leng ngariya adel gulmu duur ngi. Ki dal amnel basing ngariisel skogil mna ra. Eh mlel aulul tagara adel member go ngarii tigel adel ngiltet trir eh. Eh eh skogim ra el eh tira mneholder tigela. Andi tigel adel belholder tir adel holder tir amilar tigel adel gotir amilar tir adel me basi komohara ayka hoter tir. Mangora mangal adel gulukmilo duur ngani se ayka konsonu ngi basi. Mang maldi akudengei basi ngaram ngariya kli si ira adra immigration. Eh tsukum ngan dyaga round trip tigetengal ade dyaga purposer ngi merbelas il mutlo odidir klaskogim ra el. Eh tia ulir kadaskogim amilar tial trigibelt time eh di naglor gatetir. Longsotir eh mrgomita trir mra laskogitira holder tir basi. Komohara ayka hoter tir. Eh laten namubra hoter guk mora tra apartment eh malmon malaskertil basi mara ayka hoter. Ayka apartment rolen tigala. Mangora dyagi sal basi ngarawul ma ader belap alo gospira adel me eh. Tial immigration eh gidama murosi tir aladu basi segidil tle tayle. Mangora akura diduli tia ngan lekogora mnomre ayka. Lobby sel gidil basi immigration amna ra justice eh gatukmubre ngi mura. Akastomse melakastomse la segidil awal ngara immigration. Mangora mo dyakasal mdeyongi basi kadamgarai eh helpertir galadal sumto kudwe segidil. Ngirila ayka lobby sel ah giril mutlo mesaykel longotmok. Basi kadamgaro mosutir aladre belaw. Bay dyakadomkri ngertir. Eh lo gurutir ade mangwasen dyakal adrir eh ndi kudwe holder tir basi mahara ayka roomer tir ma apartmenter tir. Akumdasweng se dyakal malmalta president eh mang. Ndakudengei altang namogeis mta lagukmo ragort anding. Ngiril a immigration eh mutlo mo se ta ayka standard ra uwerir mangmosu il meral lol tirakla ayka lugu. Le tirakal bimbel basi alsukuma ada akmele belaw eh dyaga round trip tigetengi. Eh ngi. Ngiril mutlo ngosiris skogim ra el. Di ndiakal orgadetir eh baldu kuasen dyak tigamle lamne giril ma adri tigamlo. Yakmengaygi dal adel milgora president engamlo temlo ngul mo kasutu di. Mndireklo ger tir basi ngara charge ngayke komo komo ayka mo kasutu di. Ndingaman etil malete basi ndiak erektio mangkamey mngi almo kasutu di. Mlo kasutu di ngala. Mangora. Ngel girdio mesaset tia mangora dyegal tle tayle la uror ayka. Ayka lorol. Tsukum ngan dyakal charge ngi ngul mo kasutu di tia demurosi ngalade mrgom. Ma kadi tmu gayi de gidamtil basi ngariya gal appropriate tal gamitir git tialblay. Direkal sewel lo mesayke gigi dal tle tayla urol basi gangkadamgaran ngi mo otbur alsele lo malt. Mosabel mongil la urol ma ader belaw ma radar okia gida alme. Badigigida president eh mso la.
Solange senator. Mariur. Senator remansau.
Solay, mister president ta te al. Aldi imo ah miscellaneous eh mister president eh tiamal di malutkel girira adra bulu. Akumdasweng gidil rogu eh mister president eh mal malaswara angari ra ra la klalo. Ah nosa edel lo mesayke ra wodra finance eh li mister president eh nomtigre ngi basi sel CPI. Malubung consumer price index sel gorolba double dovalo mesera eh tora inflation. Angari ra ra la klalo eh aykel top tool basket ngara sel basket of goods eh. Eh akal ma transport malubungulu. Eh gaya quote clo angari ngi sel domesra September lastir meri la. Eh gigi dal tua quote clo angari ngi. Kada mo kmulwa ishe mister president eh leng. Eh ayka mlamomre dal boiling nosa edel gukla ngasera adra bulura tawora subsidy. Eh el altiming malmon ngan ngariisel lifeline subsidy sebi ra adel access ngi. Eh nosa edel gorangodil. Lulololololololololol daswa basi bol si ira mutlo batogar adel mosoeis bra alse. Eh akumdasweng adirek na motam mister president eh dalut lo meserni basi magaradu utel. Laa mutlo ngusel lolagail morabab. Mursel second tier. Bol si ira mutlo batogar adel soise bra alse dekado rengsa piusia mo mutlo lolngasa arala. Ade ngira ah next month ya arala lu adeka lutel meriyo ti asel domeserni ndi meral morabab. The issue is not good. As I said, Mr. President, we have to think about the budget. As I said, we have to think about the budget. As I said, Mr. President, we have to think about the budget. Identify available sources for revenue. As I said, we have to think about the budget. We have to think about the budget. As I said, Mr. President, the money is not good. The Ministry of Finance has a blue prosperity fund with 2.6 million. As I said, the Minister of Finance has a proposal. The Ministry of Finance has 10 million for the cycle fund. 5 million for the bank of Hawaii and 5 million for the trust fund. As I said, we have to think about the budget. It is time to provide some sort of relief. A temporary relief. As I said, the issue is not good. As I said, the issue is not good. As I said, Mr. President, we need to find resources and help our allies with basic necessities. As I said, the issue is not good. Mr. President.
Mr. President. Mr. President, I want to say to the lady. As I said, 3 million for the WIOA. As I said, we have to expand the other areas. As I said, we have to expand the small business. As I said, the additional benefit. As I said, we have to think about the issue. As I said, we have to think about the rule. And blame the leadership. Blame the president. Blame the rules. As I said, the understanding is not good. The border is full. As I said, the SEC, the pension, the issue is not good. The rule of regulation is not good. As I said, the issue is not good. As I said, the issue is not good. As I said, we have to think about the issue. As I said, we have to think about the issue. As I said, we have to think about the rule. As I said, we have to think about the issue. As I said, we have to think about the issue. As I said, we have to think about the issue. As I said, we have to think about the issue. As I said, we have to think about the issue. The social security, pension plan, PPUC, PNC. As I said, the issue is not good. As I said, the issue is not good. As I said, we have to think about the issue.
Mr. President, we have to think about the issue. We have to think about the meeting.
Mr. President.
Mr. President, we have to think about the supplemental budget. As I said, we have to agree. As I said, we have to agree. The Ministry of Finance, Agriculture, Fisheries and Environment. The chief executive officer is the pickery. As I said, we have to think about it. As I said, we have to think about the supplemental budget. As I said, we have to think about the supplemental budget. As I said, we have to think about the supplemental budget. As I said, we have to think about the supplemental budget. The minister, the CEO of Pickery. As I said, next week, Monday, the Ministry of Finance will meet. As I said, we have to think about it. As I said, we have to think about the issue. As I said, the final decision on the supplemental budget. As I said, we have to consider the additional budget. As I said, essential services are required. As I said, we have to think about the supplemental budget. As I said, we have to think about the supplemental budget. As I said, the legal consultant has said that the July issue is not good. As I said, the unemployment is not good. As I said, the issue is not good. As I said, the issue is not good. As I said, the issue is not good. As I said, the announcement, Mr. President, Monday or Tuesday next week, if the confirmation date is not met, we are going to have a public hearing with them. So we can make a final decision and get the supplemental budget. Mr. President.
Okay, in line with that, Senator Inabo, as I said, the financial issue is not good. We have to think about the issue. As I said, we have to think about the issue. As I said, we have to think about the issue. As I said, the financial process is not good. As I said, we have to think about the issue. As I said, we have to think about the issue. It takes time. But it takes time. As I said, the supplemental budget is not good. As I said, the issue is not good. As I said, the process is not good. As I said, the issue is not good. As I said, we have to think about it.
President, the announcement of PPUC is not good. As I said, the issue is not good. As I said, the issue is not good. As I said, the screen is not good. As I said, the social assistance process is not good. As I said, the law is not good. As I said, the calculator is not good. As I said, the Ministry of Finance is not good. This is the same issue we have brought up before. As I said, apply while the process of finance is not good. As I said, the director of the legal consultant is not good. As I said, the Ministry of Finance is not good. As I said, the quality of assistance is not good. Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Mr. President, the announcement of the Director of Social Security, Inabo, has been approved. The documents have been approved. The biscuits are advanced. The specialists have discussed the issue. As I said, the documents have been approved.
Mr. President.
As I said, the announcement of the Director of Social Security, Inabo, is here. As I said, of course, it is not good. As I said, we have to think about the supplemental budget. As I said, the policy decision related to PNMSS. As I said, we can find money anytime. As I said, the policy is not good. As I said, the policy is not good. As I said, the 2.6 million is not good. As I said, the independent bill. As I said, the House of United Muslim Church. As I said, I am not sure. As I said, the space is not good. As I said, the policy decision is not good. As I said, the supplemental budget is 10% of the budget. As I said, let's attack the supplemental budget. PNMSS. PNMSS. As I said, the issue is not good. The SEC. As I said, the issue is not good. As I said, the issue is not good. As I said, the fact is true. As I said, the fact is true. As I said, the House and the President are not good. As I said, the support is not good. As I said, the supplemental budget is not good. As I said, it is easy walk in the park. Mr. President.
Okay, the rules are not good. The rules are not good.
Mr. President. The announcement. The members of the House are subject to all of the chair.
As I said, the rules are not good. As I said, the rules are not good.